That was not a positive.
I don't think he responded.
No.
Okay, well, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of January 25th, 2022. This meeting is called to order. And Councilmember Eldama is on the phone, or at least trying to get on the phone. Councilmember Eldama, can you hear us? Apparently not. Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Hugh.
Here.
Councilmember Melner.
Present.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eldama, can you hear us?
Councilmember Eldama?
Yes.
Can you hear the mayor?
No, I'm on my phone in the meeting, but I can't hear anything.
Okay.
Nothing is working.
We're gonna count him here, because we can hear him trying to get here, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I even dialed in on my phone. It's just not working.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on. The next two items on our agenda are the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. We were supposed to have a gentleman here to do our invocation. Haven't seen him here yet. Apparently not. So we're gonna go ahead and ask Councilmember Melner if he'll do our invocation for us. If everyone, please stand and join with us in the invocation. If gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if you'd remove your hat, I would appreciate it if it's appropriate. And all of you, if you'd please remain standing after we're finished with the invocation for our pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Melner.
Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee at this time to commence this city council meeting, we're grateful that we could all be here. We're grateful for the freedoms we enjoy in this country that we can assemble. We are grateful for all that we've been given in this great city, for the economic growth and prosperity which we enjoy. We ask for thy blessings upon this council, upon this meeting, that we'll be able to move forward and wise and prudent in the decisions that are made, and that thy Spirit will be with those who make these decisions. We ask thy blessings upon this city and upon its leaders to watch over them and help them to be a good influence for good, in this we pray in thy name. Amen.
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 Everyone, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You take your seats. Okay, with that said, next on our agenda is the consideration of the minutes from the January 11th, 2022 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the January 11th, 2022 voting meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2022 voting meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second from Councilmember Clark to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Appears ayes have it, do have it, ordered. We have no proclamations, so moving on to boards, commissions, and other bodies. There are any current board and commission members or nominees that are here tonight, would you please stand up to be recognized? Okay, moving on. Ms. Bauer, would you read item number two for us, please? Oh, wait a minute. No, let's go back to our boards and commissions and other bodies.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that we make the following appointments to our boards and commissions: to the Citizens Transportation Oversight Commission, Tim Sprague, to serve a term expiring January 31st, 2023, and to our Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Helena Johnson-Bodine, to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, Bud Zomach, to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and Joseph Jarrett, to a term expiring January 31st, 2023.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, from Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? We didn't officially have this read. Ms. Bauer, if you'd go ahead and read item two for us.
Approve recommended appointments to boards, commissions, and other bodies.
Okay. Do we have any speaker cards for item number two?
No, sir.
Okay, we do have a nomination, second. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Appears ayes have it, do have it. That motion carries. Moving on to consent agenda. Items three through 15, items on the consent agenda, they're typically of routine nature or have been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards on any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Very good. It's also my understanding that Councilmember Clark would like to have items 11, 13, and 14 voted separately. Is that correct?
That is correct. No need for presentation or discussion.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items three through 10, and also items 12 through 15? Anybody?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items three through 10, number 12, and number 15.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Clark to approve the consent items three through 10, items 12 through 15. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Appears ayes have it, do have it. That motion carries. Now, moving on to items 11. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 11 for us?
Approval of FP 21-20, Stonehaven Phase III Parcel 17B Final Plat.
Any speaker cards on that item?
No, sir.
Very good. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda item number 11.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh. For the recommended action, any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Clark.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Items 11, 13, and 14 are all final plat applications for different segments within the Stonehaven project. I am on record when the Stonehaven project was amended several years ago and objected to the use of small lots. I think we had an opportunity, which we missed, to develop a superior residential community, and that has not occurred. And these three plats represent very small lot sizes.
Can you hear me?
And I will be voting no on all of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Eldama, can you hear us?
No.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Clark. We'll conduct a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
I don't think, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Eldama can hear us. Vice Mayor Eldama, if you can hear us, how do you vote? Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Moving on to item 13. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve item number 13.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Eldama, are you there? Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Can we get a motion for item 14, please?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve item number 14.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to consent resolutions. Ms. Bauer, would you read items 16 and 17 by number and title, please?
Resolution number R 22-08, a resolution to the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving the issuance by the Industrial Development Authority of the city of Glendale, Arizona, of its revenue refunding bonds, Midwestern University Series 2022, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million. Item 17, resolution number R 22-09, a resolution to the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving the Glendale Transit Title VI Implementation Plan. And that concludes the consent resolutions.
All right, very good. Do we have any speaker cards for items 16 and 17?
No, sir.
We do not. Okay, can I get a motion to approve item 16?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt consent resolutions 16 and 17.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Clark to approve items 16 and 17 on our consent resolutions agenda. And before I start our roll call, I would like to recognize that we do have a very large contingency of Midwestern University. If you folks would stand up for us and be recognized, welcome to City Hall. You've been here before, but... My wife is taking full advantage of your dental school, so, so, very good. Thank you. Okay, with that said, this is not a roll call vote. This is a, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Very good. Thank you. That passes. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 18 for us?
Authorization to enter into an agreement with Dana Kepner Company LLC for census Omni Large Water Meters and Replacement Parts. No speaker cards.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion?
Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I move that we approve item number 18.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
As is my habit in practice, I will be voting no on this item and the two following items, as they are five-year contracts. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Senator Tri, Vice Mayor Eldama again, are you there? No, he's not. Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 19 for us, please?
Award of RFP 22-06 and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Gonzalez Asphalt Inc. to provide saw, cutting, and milling services. No speaker cards.
Very good. Can I get a motion, please?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we award RFP 22-06 and authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreements.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Before I go, I'm gonna take this out of order. I have a card from Scott Johnson that did not put the agenda item that he wanted to speak on. Scott, where are you at?
Yes, sir.
What item is it you want to speak on?
21, sir.
Okay, very good. I don't, I don't want to miss you, that's why I was asking. Okay, with that said, we'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember.
No, nay, nay.
Councilmember Clark would like to change her vote to no. Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 20, please?
Award of RFP 22-06 and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with P1 Paving and Construction LLC to provide saw, cutting, and milling services.
Speaker cards?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 20?
Yes, Mayor, I move we award the professional services agreement to P1 Paving and Construction.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark.
No.
How do you vote? No. Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Land development actions. Ms. Bauer, would you please introduce item 21?
Ordinance number O 22-10, an ordinance to the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning property located at the southeast, southeast corner of Glendale Avenue and Alsop Avenue from RR 45 to PAD, Planned Area Development, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance, public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report this evening is Tabitha Perry, our interim planning manager.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open on item 21, ordinance 022-10. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Fouts. Good evening, Mayor and council. The item that I'm presenting before you this evening, council may recall that it was brought before you on January the 11th for the adoption of the annexation in which council approved. The subject application is entitled Crow 303. It's approximately 146 acres in size, and the request is to rezone the property from the city-like zoning upon the annexation of RR 45, which allows for the single-family residence to a PAD, Planned Area Development, for a mixed-use development, which would allow for commercial and industrial land uses. The subject property is located approximately 12 miles from City Hall. Here's an area map, just for more context of the subject site. To the northeast and the northwest portion of the property is property that is long with it, that is already within the city boundaries and allows for industrial development. Across west side of Alsop Avenue is residential development that is in the county, and in the center of the proposed subject site is approximately 10 residential lots that remains within the county. The general planned land use designation for the subject property is Loop compatible land uses, and within the PAD, the applicant, as well as staff, worked with Luke Air Force Base to ensure that the proposed land uses are consistent and compatible with Luke Air Force Base. Here's a zoning map that once again shows that surrounding properties are currently zoned PAD, excluding the properties that are located within the county. The subject site is within the Luke Air Force Base North Contours area, and once again, the applicant worked with city staff and with Luke to address their concerns, to ensure that the application of the PAD would meet the concerns of Luke as far as land uses and development standards. Here is, before you as succumbs conceptual site plan. Once again, this is just conceptual. The applicant does not have specific end users at this time. Once end users come in, the, an application for a design review approval will be done administratively to determine the actual layout, design of subject buildings. But there are some things that the applicant did take in consideration as they proposed the PAD to staff and bringing it before city council this evening. There are development standards which are compatible to development standards that are within the N1 zoning district of our current zoning ordinance, but the variations for comparison is the M1 zoning district would allow for a maximum height of 30 feet, where the applicant is proposing a maximum height of 55 feet. The setbacks are compatible to the setbacks that are allowed within the N1 zoning district. Once again, the applicant was concerned and took consideration to the residential lots that's located in the center of the subject site. So, the proposal within the conceptual site plan shows significant setbacks greater than what is the minimum required within the proposed PAD. For comparison, you will see that surrounding the properties within the center, the residential properties, the applicant has proposed setbacks that are greater than 165 feet. Also, as you can see, that there are some residential lots located west of Alsop, and the applicant also took that in consideration, where the setback is 188 feet from the property line of the subject site. The application was heard before a planning commission on July, I'm sorry, January the 13th, in which the applicant also completed their citizen participation process. During the citizen participation process, there was no opposition of the virtual meeting. However, when the application was presented before a planning commission at the January 13th, planning commission public hearing, there was one resident who spoke that had questions as it relates to improvements along Glendale Avenue, as well as irrigation ditch and how it may impact his property. Staff just want to give clarification to that before city council, that the development of this particular site would not influence on any water rights for the proposed, proposed residential lots that are located west of Alsop Avenue. The city staff is aware that there's a transition between, along Glendale Avenue, between Alsop and Cerebral Avenue, where the lanes are only, the road is only two lanes. So, city staff, particularly with the transportation department, they are looking into that now to construct a plan to deal with improvements along that area between Alsop and Cerebral Avenue. We did not have specifics for the resident who spoke at the planning commission at that time, but between the planning commission and the application being presented before you this evening, staff, as well as the applicant, did try to address the concerns of the applicant, I'm sorry, of the resident from the planning commission public hearing. Planning commission did give a recommendation of approval before city council, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor.
I have one question, Mayor. What is the setback on the south part of the neighborhood there? And I don't have on the, on the online version of this, it doesn't give me any of the numbers, but I know you said, I believe it's the east was 165, the west was 188, but I didn't get the number for the buffer to the, to the south of that little, small, little residential farm neighborhood there.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, are you speaking to the south of the residential lots?
Between, between the residential and the, and whatever the row of trees is there, and then, I know that there's a, but that's probably parking in between there, so I just, the buffers were identified on the other areas that bordered the neighborhood, but not on the, I don't think it was north or south that we gave us those buffers.
Mayor and council, I did not give the buffering from Alsop, because I recognize that it's being part of a different PAD, so I didn't identify what those setbacks are, if I'm correct, or where you're looking at.
No, I'm talking about, so if you, if you're looking at the, I'll hold, if you're looking at the little neighborhood that's gonna be in the middle of this complex, there's buildings to the north and there's buildings to the south, but we, I don't think we got the buffers, or I don't have the numbers for sure, I didn't see it to the south. It's not on this slide, so I don't...
Correct. Once again, around that border that you see in red, I'm identifying that all of those setbacks that is being proposed by the applicant right now are greater than 165 feet. If you, the specifics of the PAD itself will require a minimum of 60 feet.
Okay, so, can I, can you put that slide where I can see it? Because those numbers are not on my, on slide eight.
Mayor.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, so it shows 188 feet from Alsop and 165 feet from, I don't know, I guess that's to the, that's to the east, apparently, of that neighborhood, where building C and building D is, but what is the buffer between the neighborhood and building A, and what is the buffer between the neighborhood and building E?
Okay. Mayor, council members, specifically Councilmember Tomachoff, what I was trying to illustrate is the lining that you see around the residential, excluding along Alsop, was saying that the applicant was proposing greater than 165 feet of a distance of a setback.
All the way around.
All the way around.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. That clears it up for me. Thank you.
What else you got?
That concludes it.
That's it. Okay, so, if you'd like to have a seat, I'm gonna ask Scott Johnson to come up. Mr. Johnson, you got three minutes, sir. If you have any visuals, right there on the, just to the left of the podium, as you come up to the podium, you can lay those inside those taped boxes, and the camera can pick them up. Or if you have items that you want all the council to see, you can give them to the clerk, and she can pass them out to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What I'll need you to do is, when you speak, I need you to tell people where you're from. If it's the city of Glendale, your district, if you know it, if not, the crossroads. If it's another city, just the name of the city, and then you'll have three minutes to speak, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if I can get through this in three minutes, but if you would indulge me just for maybe a minute more. My name is Scott Johnson. I do live at 15915 West Glendale Avenue. It's actually unincorporated Maricopa County. My mailing address is Litchfield Park.
We don't need it.
Okay. I've been in communication with Mr. Edward Vigil and Mr. Michael Bushbacker about my concerns, and with some minor occasional delays in getting back to me, they have been responsive. I received no written response of the planning action. After advising Mr. Bushbacker this, he did email me a copy of the proposal. At the last planning commission meeting, more than one member remarked that no documentation of the sending notice to the neighbors was included in the submission packet. The committee member stated this was a customary practice to have that included, but it was not. The posting also was not correct along the proposed section, and at the end of the package, you'll have, there are two pictures on the last two pages, those illustrate where it said on the actual banner, the actual sign, said the southwest corner of Glendale and Alsop was gonna be annexed, not the southeast. I did call Mr. Bushbacker after about a two-month period. I didn't see it for two months, I was out of town with my grandson, but when I got back, I saw the sign, and when the sign was posted, I was walking, my dog saw it, it said southwest corner, and, and what I did is I contacted Mr. Bushbacker at the phone number provided. He did place a sticker, putting it as the southeast corner, but the posting was incorrect at the time, I saw it. An email from Mr. Bushbacker contains the following information regarding road and irrigation: From Glendale Avenue to Cerebral to Alsop. The annexation, this is quoting from his email, "The annexation of the existing right-of-way on Glendale Avenue between Cerebral and Alsop avenues will most likely occur in March or April of this year." Second bullet, "The city is currently having the legal descriptions prepared, and then it will be, need to go to city council." Next bullet, "The city is working on a transportation plan for the area, but it is still too early to be able to define specific projects or timeframes." Next bullet point, "Right-of-way for this segment would be 55 feet for the half-street, 110 feet total, and 65 feet within 250 feet of the intersections of Cerebral and Alsop. If additional right-of-way is required in the future, it would have to come from the private property owned by existing homeowners along Glendale Avenue. It is not known yet how the city would obtain that future right-of-way. That's a major point of concern for me at this time." The existing total right-of-way is approximately 67 feet wide. That's the existing road. Possible future irrigation ditch outcomes. If the ditch is private, it would likely be relocated outside the right-of-way to private property. The city would work with property, with the property owner, on their preference of an open ditch versus pipe, if there are no safety concerns. If Adamant, that's the current water company, owns the ditch, they have rights to stay within the right-of-way, and would definitely place the ditch in an underground pipe." And then I had a good conversation with Mr. Bushbacker on the phone, and he sent a synopsis of our conversation. I agree in part and disagree in part with his synopsis, and Mr. Bushbacker's synopsis and my comments are highlighted. The proposed possible conditions are stipulations, and this is direct from his email. "At the time of the Glendale Avenue expansion between Alsop and Cerebral, I agree that the existing irrigation ditch on my property would be protected, so that water continues to your property," and I put my comment, "no financial impact to the homeowner. And a method for maintaining irrigation water flow to the property will occur during construction of the road. I also agree, as long as there's no financial impact to me. I disagree that the city will make all efforts to provide fair compensation for any land that is needed for this portion of right-of-way on your property." I added a comment, "Who decides what constitutes all effort and fair compensation? I agree that signs would be posted on this segment of Glendale Avenue that redirects truck truck traffic to alternate routes until the city widens that segment of the road." That was from Mr. Bushbacker, and I agree with that. "I would agree that all streetlights, traffic lights, and onsite parking lights would be shielded to minimize light noise to adjacent residential properties." I must add, after he put this, I guess, Mr. Bushbacker did speak to his client and said that he would not want to have any restrictions down Glendale for the additional truck traffic, so I just, after I had written this, he had sent me a follow-up email, didn't have time to put it into this document. "I'm suggesting the City Council consider the following alternatives: To postpone this rezone effort until such time as a written proposal be distributed to the residential homeowners along Glendale Avenue from Saraville to Alsop, providing an understanding of how this section of Glendale Avenue may be affected, i.e. by improvements and increased traffic concerns. Number two, possibility, modify Glendale Avenue to become a dead-end road at the intersection of Glendale and Alsop. Number three, install no-truck traffic signs on Glendale between Saraville and Alsop." The next page does have a proposal that I did put together from a map that would allow for truck traffic to come from Northern Parkway down Reams, which does not have any residential people that face Reams, there are no existing residences there whatsoever, and then it could turn from Reams onto Glendale where there's no residential residences, and the X actually marks where the new warehouse or where this project would be. So, from Northern Parkway down Reams to Glendale would be a very appropriate truck route, as well as from Bethany Home coming up to Alsop. That would also be an additional route for trucks to take, because there's no residences along that, or very minimal, I should say, and the expansion would be very easy there. "I believe benefits would be no need to acquire sections of residential properties between Glendale and Alsop. I believe there would be taxpayer savings, there would be no need to improve the residential section of Glendale Avenue as illustrated on the map, and it would be easy truck entry and exit from the existing infrastructure." Again, the two attachments behind that show the sign that actually did have the southwest corner, which did concern me and prompted me to contact Mr. Bushbacker. Sorry for going over time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Is Mr. Vigil or Mr. Bushbacker, either one here tonight? Sir, would you like to respond? You can have a seat. You can have a seat, sir.
Thank you. Michael Bushbacker, 10450 North 74th Street, Scottsdale, Arizona 85250, representing Hunter We had discussions, that is correct, and we were trying, I was trying to find out what ways we could help resolve any issues for Mr. Johnson. He recorded all those and presented them to you. We believe we've done everything within our effort as far as planning to move this forward and to listen and relay these comments back to the city. Many of these issues are related to a city process that we're kind of separated from, and that is that the transportation plan has to accommodate certain roadways in the area. So, specifically, the section of Glendale Avenue from Alsop to Saraville, at some point, it's independent of this case, but it is related to the area. There are three, two other projects that have been approved recently in the area, and there will be increased traffic, so...
Would you like to address the irrigation issue?
Irrigation will be dealt with, as Mr. Johnson had claimed, as per the comments and discussions I had with the city, and that is, it will be either buried in a pipe or moved where he would like, I believe it's an adamant pipe, so Adamant would like to have that probably put into, in the ground, and that's about, oh, there's no restrictions on his water whatsoever, and this is all stuff that would occur through a city process that, to be honest, we're not the experts and we really shouldn't comment on, and I would expect that maybe Tabitha could follow up with kind of some background information on, I think she explained it before, that the city is in the process of trying to plan roads in this area.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I just want a clarification on you mentioned about the road needing to be used in the future. Can you expound on that a little bit, what you meant and by that comment?
Okay, so there are two developments approved that are currently east of Alsop, and they have both been approved without any conditions on this segment of road of Glendale between Alsop and Saraville. This would be the third one, and the amount of traffic heading that direction towards the 303 would probably increase. There's a traffic study that supports and moves that provides that information and shows how we can create the development without upgrading that segment of road, but the point by Mr. Johnson that we wanted to make sure was understood was that at some point that that section of road should be potentially improved, and that's up to the city, so it's not really a decision we can make. So I just wanted to let you know that it's kind of out of our hands, and it's kind of a city issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on Item 21?
Yes, Mayor. I move that we pass and adopt ordinance number 022-10.
Mayor, point of order, please. Point of order, please, Mayor. I didn't have a question for the applicant's representative, but I did have a question for Mr. Bailey, if I could, please. Did the corrected posting meet the legal requirements? Once the posting, onsite posting was correct, it was there for the amount of time that met the legal requirement?
Mayor and council, I'm going to have to ask somebody else to answer that question because I'm unaware of the facts surrounding that.
Okay.
Ms. Perry, you know?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, Mr. Johnson did bring that concern up before our Planning Commission as well. Jim Gruber, the deputy city attorney, answered the same similar question from the Planning Commission, and basically, the intent of the posting was met, and that at that time, Mr. Jim Gruber did not believe that there was any violations to the legal notification requirements, meaning that the site was posted within a newspaper, it met that requirement. The postcards were sent out as part of the legal process, and the posting, the information on the posting was correct, however, it was located on the inappropriate corner, but the intent overall, at that time, the deputy city attorney felt like the intent of the legal requirement was met.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second, and Councilmember Tomachoff for the recommended action. Do we have any other discussion on this motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just wanted to get some clarification, perhaps from the city regarding Glendale Avenue and the concern about expanding the street and addressing the citizens' concern regarding what happens in the future. I mean, do we kind of have an idea yet where we're going to go with this?
Then your question is to who?
To any staff that can answer it.
Mayor and councilmembers, Glendale Avenue and a bunch of other streets are part of an agreement with the county, so Glendale Avenue, at least this portion, is going to be the city's right-of-way. Alsop, on the other hand, is going to remain a county. The dimensional aspects of this improvement, they've been identified, this particular developer will be responsible for the half-street that's going to be required for improvement, the other half to be done by the property owner or the developer to the north.
Okay, but we're talking, I guess I'm talking, do we know where that's going to be, if there's going to be any addition, is it going to be expanded beyond two lanes? Is that the thought from staff at this point?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Mounar.
I'll go back to a slide real quick to kind of help with this, but it's not showing.
Just to give clarification to that part of it, so the Transportation Department, as well as additional departments within the city, has been coordinating with the county in regards to who would control which roads in the 303 area. I believe during a workshop, Transportation Department presented before City Council a plan that they were working on to determine the annexation process of roads that would be annexed to the city of Glendale versus roads that would be maintained or de-anexed to the county. In that process of doing that, the Transportation Department, Land Development Engineer Department, as well as Development Service, have been working to determine what roads would need to be approved, specifically along Glendale Avenue. So, at this time, the notion is that planning land development would come back before City Council with a right-of-way request for annexation along Glendale Avenue, but we do not have a date specific of when that will occur, like so, as Transportation is working on this plan, we do not have the specifics of how Glendale Avenue between Alsop and Saraville will be developed, but once the city staff determine how it will be improved, then we will bring that back before council. And I think it's also important to make note of, it's because we do not know, through the applicant, it was conveyed to Mr. Johnson that there was three different possibilities that could occur, but it's too soon for us to say specifically how that area along Glendale Avenue will be improved, and if it would truly impact the property owners between Alsop and Saraville. That information is still being worked out on the details.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I have a question as a result of Councilmember Mounar's question. I thought a month or so ago, Transportation presented to us an agreement that they had worked out between the county and the city as to which roads would remain county, and which, and it did not include Glendale Avenue?
Mayor and council, I will call Transportation staff to come up and speak specifically on that.
Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, yes indeed, we did receive today the fully executed copy of the agreement with Maricopa County, and so, Glendale Avenue will become a city road, Alsop will remain, Alsop will remain a county road, so today the agreement was finalized, so. And all roadways, like Glendale Avenue will be a five-lane, as development comes in, all the roadways will be widened, or the Glendale Avenue will be widened to a five-lane section, but that will be done as each development comes in, we'll have them build a half-street.
Now, I just want to clarify, because I thought I heard you say Glendale will be a city road and Glendale will be a county road.
No, Glendale Avenue will be a city road and Alsop will be a county road, so I do apologize if I was not clear.
All right, that's what I, when we signed the, I remember Alsop, and that that would remain within the county's jurisdiction.
Correct.
Now, with regard to development of Glendale Avenue, this particular property, and I'm going to try to look up something very quickly, abuts Glendale Avenue for a short portion, from what I can tell, Alsop and then to the east to Reams, and their property, their development abuts between Alsop and Reams. Now, they will be required, will they be required to put in a half-street on that north of their property, on Glendale Avenue between Alsop and Reams?
Yes, they will be required to build a half-street.
Okay, so currently, that street is what, two lanes?
Two lanes, one lane in each direction.
Okay, when they put in the half-street, what does it become?
The, it will, the ultimate section for that road will be two lanes in each direction with a center lane, so what will be built as part of this development will be the two lanes and half of the median lane or the center turn lane.
Okay, so, would I be correct in understanding that when the developer comes in and does his half of the street, Glendale Avenue on the portion that I have indicated will be two lanes going westbound and two lanes going eastbound?
When this developer comes in, they'll already be building half the street, so we will have to coordinate, striping the ultimate facility when the development on the other side comes in, so...
Okay, if they're building half the street, how many lanes will there be between Alsop and Reams?
When they're building their half-street, it will remain striped as one lane until the entire segment gets all built out, so, there is, you know, we theoretically could open the two lanes, but they may want a turn lane, so at this point, I would stripe out the, one of the two lanes. The pavement will be there, but more than likely, we will be...
So, be one lane in each direction still, but a large lane in each direction, because you're not going to stripe it for two in each direction, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that, what?
Technically, it should be from Saraville to Reams when we will open all five-lane sections, so there, it will be, it will be done incrementally, and when all, when all the development on both sides and all the entire road is built, at that point, we will open it to make it an official five-lane section.
All right, I think I understand. Thank you very much, Mr. Abbo.
Okay.
Mayor?
Okay, we're going to wrap the discussion up, go ahead.
Okay, I have a question, though, because I believe the residence issue is with, between Alsop and Saraville. That's, that is residential on the north and on the south side there, so, right now, that's two, one lane each direction, right, and there's probably dirt, no curb going under, it's rural out there.
Correct.
So, making those improvements between Alsop and Reams, I mean, how, what is the plan, I mean, is it condemnation? I mean, how is, how is the street going to be, is there adequate right-of-way right now, is that county, or who, like, there's got to be some right-of-way that's, you know, not owned by every property, or do they own it right up to the street?
So, are we talking, still talking about Glendale Avenue?
Glendale Avenue between Alsop and Saraville, which is, I believe, is what the general issue is.
Yes, and that entire segment, once we get west of Alsop, there's residential development, but between, between Alsop and Reams Road, it looks like it's, there's no development on the, on the, no residential development on the south side of Glendale Avenue.
Right, but I'm talking about west of Alsop to Saraville, where the residential is. So, that's what I'm asking, is what is the city's plan for, I mean, we're not, you know, you're going to have somebody, you're going to have a two-lane road with turn lanes and everything else, and then it's going to end at Alsop and then just be two lanes, or, I mean, how, what is the plan to, you know, make the road go through to Saraville and continue on all the way to the 303, which probably is what the plan is?
Ultimately, we will have to take a look at that, because there will be some, right now, there is 33 feet north and 33 feet south, so, so there may be the ability to put two lanes in each direction, but we may not be able to build the ultimate section until we acquire some additional right-of-way, but that, until those properties either develop or we end up using diff or self-funding to build the rest of the road, we, it'll have to be, it'll have to remain as one lane in each direction in that area. So there are no immediate plans at this point.
Okay, Mayor, just, so when you say until those properties develop, between Alsop and Saraville, they are developed, though, they're resident, rural residential?
Yes, maybe I should have said until they are redeveloped.
Okay, okay, so that's a possibility as well, all right.
Correct.
I just wanted to understand, because obviously, we're not going to want it to go four lanes, then two lanes, and then four lanes, the idea is just, is, I know that to get back and forth from the 303. Okay, I just wanted to understand, thank you.
Okay. Second. Okay, I've got a motion, I have a second, we've had a discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Okay, moving on to council, comments and suggestions, we'll start with you, Councilmember Clark.
I'm asleep at the wheel tonight, it was such a short meeting, I can't get over it. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the residents, and a special thank you to the City Council for coming out for the opening of Heroes Park Lake. It was amazing, I drive by it every day. The lake is fished out already, the lake was fished out a week after it opened. I understand fishing game are going to restock it in February, but there are still hopefuls fishing, hoping to catch that elusive trout that isn't there, but it is being used constantly, the entire lake perimeter, I see families with walkers with children in them, I see families picnicking at the vermatas, it is being used extensively, and it is loved by everyone, so, again, my thank you to the entire City Council for funding this project, we are very grateful.
Councilmember Hugh.
Nothing this time, here.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor, if I could just have a moment to let everyone know that a pedestrian friend of mine, and actually a friend of the city, was hit crossing the street in the crosswalk with the light last Monday and was seriously injured, and I'd just like to say, I, you know, feel terrible for the pedestrian, I also feel terrible for the driver. know, feel terrible for the pedestrian, and I also feel terrible for the driver. And it is really, really dangerous driving around this town, and it's really dangerous being a pedestrian in this town. And I'd just like to caution everyone, especially when you're a driver, take an extra second to make sure there's not a pedestrian in the crosswalk, in the right-of-way, in the street. We have a lot of pedestrians hit by cars in this town, and, you know, the driver stayed on scene. Apparently, the driver was not impaired, and it's an accident that could have happened to any of us. So take an extra second when you're turning left, turning right, make sure there's not a pedestrian in the crosswalk. It could, I feel horrible for the driver that hit the pedestrian, too. So it could happen to anyone, and it's not worth, you know, not taking that second to make sure that the intersection is clear before you proceed. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remind everybody that the 58th Annual Glendale Arts Council Jury Art Show is in its final week at Swarrazh Park and the fruitpacking gallery there. It's a terrific show. It's open from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. daily, and it will close on Sunday, but it'll be open Sunday, but that's the last day, so I invite all of you out to see the show. And speaking of Swarrazh Park, many residents have noticed that there's been significant distress on the trees in the orchards there. It's due not only to the age of the citrus trees, but also to the unseemly hot weather we've had the last couple of summers, and the lack of rain, and some irrigation issues, a multitude of things have brought that condition. But I want to let residents know that beginning this morning, maybe yesterday, but I saw it first this morning, that we have a contractor out there that is removing dead wood and dead trees. 129 new trees will be planted in the citrus orchards, and the park should be looking much better soon, and we're getting, you know, getting it in shape for the next generation. So thank you, Mayor, and that's all I have.
All right. And I'd just like to remind everybody, it's only 11 months before Christmas. How wonderful is that, huh? Okay. Next on our agenda is the citizens' comments. Council makes the opportunity available to citizens to bring information and business before a council that is not on the printed agenda. We have one gentleman tonight that would like to come up and speak. James, you know the drill, three minutes. You're using your time up, buddy.
Hi, I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. I want to say thank you for taking care of the homeless problem at 67 Avenue and P.O. Avenue. My sister Sophia was concerned about this. Finally, my friend Gerald Haley is interested in moving back to the city of Glendale. The reason is Mesa and the West Valadee are getting too hard for him to get around town. I would like Gerald to find a new apartment through Section 8 Housing in Glendale. His family is currently living in Glendale, Arizona. He grew up in South Glendale. It would be happy to see Gerald Haley in Glendale once again. The Haley's family would be happy for Gerald to live in Glendale again. Thank you for the time and consideration.
Thanks, James. Okay, there being no further business before the council tonight, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. No objection. Thank you.